Uh, good evening. It's five thirty-five, five thirty-six. We're actually running a few minutes later. Our apologies to anybody that's online. Uh, watching and or listening tonight. Uh, calling our September eleventh important meeting to order. And our first order of business as usual. Is public input. That's one of two for the evening. Um, we will take public comment tonight from our virtual audience. If you wish to speak during the public comment sessions, we will allow an in-person guest to speak first if we have any for three minutes. Once we go through all of our in-person guests, we'll open it up to virtual speakers on Zoom. If you would like to in order to speak, please do the following. Raise your virtual hand. Enter your full name in your avatar profile. When speaking, turn your camera on and say your full name and town of residence. When these are complete, you will have three minutes to speak. So Mister Chamberlain, do we have any?
We do not, sir.
Okay, thank you. Our next order of business is the consent agenda. We have three items listed. Number one is the draft minutes from our July seventeenth board retreat that we held. Down at the brick. The second item is the draft minutes of the August twenty-sixth board meeting, which we discussed the facilities. And then the third item is a budget transfer request for this year. So. I'll ask if there's any questions, comments, or we need to look at consent number one or consent number two. Cause I want item number three to be reviewed by Miss Basie or Mister Berry as needed.
I'm good with one and two.
Okay. All those in favor of accepting uh consent agenda number one and number two. Saying aye. And I know for the public record that Mister George Torres is not here tonight. He had a business commitment, so he will not be in attendance. Uh, budget transfer request, item number three. Basically, a procedural. Uh, but if you wanna kind of just explain what we're doing.
Yeah, it's just a reallocation of the um, the budgeted pool for the non-union increases, just to align that with our payroll.
So it's just more detailed, basically? Is that what I'm getting?
Well, when we budget for the non-union increases, we put them into one account um, for the payroll and then for the benefits in another account. And then um, when we actually go to pay people, we put those wage increases and. Um, associated benefit increases to the particular payroll line for those employees.
So we do this like every year then?
We do.
Or then break it down?
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you. So I will take a motion to accept uh consent agenda number three, which is the budget transfer request is just outlined. Second, all those in favor? Motion passes uh, consent passes for nothing.
Thank you.
Item number four of tonight's agenda reports received. Um, we have the facilities report from August twenty twenty-four. Treasures report from April, May, June, July, and August. So basically. Kind of our summer season of sorts, twenty twenty-four. And then we have Mister Lecklider's report, and Mister Lecklider is not here tonight. Any questions? Or input on any of those reports? Treasure reports from Miss Basie or our building report?
The school is great.
Yeah, no, it's outside looks good.
Yeah.
Side looks good. Got to walk around. All the bulletin boards are are really well done. In this room, they've been kind of like cleaning out and consolidating and uh. They do a good job, and so appreciate it for us.
Hard to.
Yeah, looks really good.
Although they mentioned. And I went to my first opening day of school. It's a lot of fun to see the kids go. The weather was great, so that was good. And I just wanted to mention Mister Lecklider having meet and greet uh to coffee with the principal. On Friday, September twenty-seventh, eight o'clock in the multipurpose room. So anybody interested in joining in for that.
You said coffee with the principal is twenty-seventh at eight AM?
Eight.
Yep.
Alright, cool.
Yep.
And anyone can come from the community or parents. Yes, it's all. You don't have to be a parent or family member.
So he's not here, but I I did wanna ask, cause I heard that we had a a robust enrollment over the summer. So do you have any numbers of, I I've got the report here in here with how many, but do we have a? Where we ended up? And June versus where we started with this month?
I have to look while we talk. I'll go see if I can find. Yeah. Just give you, I'll give you a rough. I think it's it's an increase of uh fifteen. Ish, you know, students from the last end of the year to to the beginning of this year, but I'll get the exact.
So that's two, two, two pretty great. Well, our two plus, it's great.
Revenue.
Yep.
Not much more expensive. I'm quoting now. That's a good thing.
So I will take a motion to accept the reports that we just outlined. There's so is report, the five treasures report and sports. And Mister Lecklider's principal reports. Motion from somebody?
Oh, sure. I'll make. So also move. I was still reading one.
We're on a practice, apparently.
And a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Next up is um. Our Mount Vernon School Board Goals for twenty-four, twenty-five, and I did wanna review those. Briefly, I wanna keep these in the forefront a little bit more than I have in the past, and I certainly want the board to be engaged. Um, the first one is to communicate, increase communication between the school board and community. Including but limited to budget advocacy and facility committee support. And then the first action step falls on me, and I will do a much better job this year. My plan is to not just to three. After every meeting, I'll make a point to recap as best I can. And then do a quick update and upload it to the flyer.
That's something you and I can work on together, Steve, too, after meetings.
So that's been a request from multiple uh. Community members, and that's just an easy, easy fix. So I'll take take responsibility for that. Um, I won't go through every bullet point. I think we're plugged into the bullet points there. I did wanna mention that one, cause again, that's when. We'll say a hot button, but it's it's been a consistent ask from community.
So there were two revisions. Um, one um was a revision to the facility committee. Last year, the goal was to establish the facility committee to network. This year, it's to determine educational specifications. Okay, so that's a change in that goal. And then we added another goal to the board to lead successful negotiation. Negotiations is typically a board goal, and it's a significant board action. So we added M D A negotiations to get us on that, just for your, I mean, good with everyone.
And you're gonna see us kind of uh make sure they're on the forefront of the website. Uh, we might include this in some newsletters in 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 communications home to families. Uh, and uh, both the board goals and school goals. And uh, so we are gonna be a little bit more uh proactive in our communication of what we're doing. And reporting out on updating on how we're progressing through those, at least for the school. So.
So so I would suggest you just add exactly what it said to the goal of about the facility committee. Right, about communicating out there. I know we mentioned communicating out in. Overall, as well, just.
Yeah, no, we we will. We're we're getting up and running, you know, with, it's funny, like as we started here, like. The school year started last week, and and then all of a sudden you got back to work on Monday and you realize. Quite a few board meetings, quite a few budget meetings, quite a few things, like a kidney in the in the, like, people were ready to work, right? And then went for the summer, and then we're coming, so we'll continue to get that going and uh, and uh, you know. Katie Gary, our communication board, has visited M V and and worked with Tom and the administrative assistants on that system. So we'll continue that process, and anytime you guys have ideas or or thoughts around that topic, we're definitely willing to partner. And listen and take suggestions, so.
Good, thank you. Oversight, the goal is the board will receive regular updates about policies, practices. And procedures related to security at M V B S. And. I had a question on that. Yeah, questions. Is. Who would initiate at the research, I guess, of federal grant money? If we wanted to do security upgrade to this facility? Aside from the current project that we have going, but if we. If we stay the course of what we have and where we're at. How would we go about finding if there's there's money to. Federal grant perspective for security?
So we're, we're provided that information from Tom, from the Hampshire Education Department. With every time there's a state grant, uh, we apply. So.
What are those? How much are those usually? What's available? Is it significant or not?
We've had a couple. Uh, there's been a few rounds, and we are, uh, we were awarded funds. And the second round, the first round, we weren't in this district. So it 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 really depends, but we, this, that was the grant where we received a hundred thousand dollars.
I guess where my head's going is, is the entryway, how we let people into the building. Um, I think sooner than my opinion only, by speaking to the board, that we need to. Stay proactive on researching and trying to find some money. To possibly have to do a major renovation project to provide a safe entryway. Safer, safer entryway, and that's why I'm asking the question. So a hundred thousand dollars is a better cover. Now, rebuild, remodel, run anywhere, that's what I'm asking.
I mean, a lot of the. Doors throughout the school probably use.
So.
Safety upgrade as well.
I I would just like for us to keep that on. A constant conversation and see if there's money's available.
I uh, make note of that.
And I, again, I don't know whether that's, I mean, obviously you're plugged in, but you know, is that? Is why you're adding access to money, so I don't know.
So we're, I mean, we. Who knows, there could be, you know, something that we don't know about, but we are informed um. By the Hampshire Department of Education anytime there's something like that, and those funds. Uh, grant funds flow through them, they're federal dollars, but they are administered by the D O E. Um, and then go into our grant management system, and there's a whole process. So that was the most recent state grant that. We did receive here. Um, and if there's other rounds, then we're we're told um. Ahead of time. And we were fortunate, we were ready to go with um, with plans to be able to. Um, apply for those funds. Not every district got those, but Roger and I were prepared and and applied and got the maximum. Dollar. So we're certain.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean there's something out there that we don't know about, but.
Yeah.
Um, but we certainly are ready to apply for um, for for. Um, for funds when they, we know that they become available, so.
Justice point, you know, a hundred thousand would would do a lot of doors, and they may not do a remodel, but. A lot of dicks, so. Okay, thank you. Thank you for that feedback.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments about our overall? Goals that we have as a board, and again, I wanna keep these kind of in the forefront and revisit them on a regular basis.
And that will happen on the homepage of the Mountain Burning Assembly page, so you'll have access in there. And I can keep them. Keep them there. We can always, if you if you wanna an update on on the goals and where we're at, then we can always add creative agendas when we report out. I got, I got the number from the end of the year. The whole case was moving, we're at two thirty-four as today, it's two twenty when we concluded in the spring. So fourteen. So. That's, that's significant.
Yeah. Actually, I think it was the ladies in the office, and I stopped there and saw Tom, and he wasn't here, but. Uh, it was before we opened, and they commented. They mentioned that we're getting more of the. The update.
The kindergarten body.
Nineteen eighteen for kindergarten?
Is it really that big?
Thirty-seven according to the report.
Wow.
I figured nineteen eighteen. Doesn't it usually go off after kindergarten, too? Yeah, typically, because some people in private were were choose not to, you know, it's not mandatory. So nineteen in kindergarten, that's our biggest, kindergarten is our biggest class, the class of.
Twenty thirty-seven.
There you go, Ken, so.
That is really big.
Yeah, sixteen and seventeen.
Not even close to what my kids were.
So.
Got you.
A lot of years ago.
Function very well, nineteen, well, as you call them, little.
So there's a lot of ones.
A lot of little.
Maybe at some point when we have presentations to.
Yeah, kindergarten, it's always gonna be fun to hear.
I'm great, too.
I don't think we have any committee updates doing?
I'm starting to do.
Okay. So I think. Uh, so any update? Uh, you wanna touch base on where we're at with Harold?
Yes. So um, thank you for the August twenty-seventh board meeting. We were trying to stay, you know, connected to Harriman on their timeline. They appreciated it. So outcome of the twenty-seventh is we had a framework for education specifications. Uh, we met with Harriman, uh, talked about the design going from instead of an additional gym, an additional eating space, which made perfect sense. They will also, because it's easy to overlay a gym, so you can see what the cost difference is between a cath and a gym. Uh, they also um, will will talk what um, for a cafeteria space, uh, it's all more choice. But uh, districts are moving to the stage in the cafeteria because of the, like, what would happen, what could happen? Um, this gym, which has a tile base, right, because it's a cafeteria half the time, if it becomes a full-time gym. At some point, the community, doesn't mean have to be us, it could be a community, we replace it with wood, or what's called a mondo floor. Uh, much more forgiving, uh, especially when this becomes much more, you know, at six o'clock at night, it can be a community, men's basketball league, women's basketball league. But right, it goes a key slot. And so when it comes to full-time gym, my recognition would be to take a look at it over time, because I know it's a big bill. But to replace the floor with what's called mondo, which is the rubber, or wood, which is more traditional, either way, I can even cost it out. Um, so they're gonna cost out, well, they're gonna present three plans. Uh, one plan will have a two-story approach, the other two will be one stories. Um, Roger and I met and went through the specs. They will also um, talk about the the uh, cooperative space, the classroom space. Uh, should talk to you, you talked about the cave, I love that stuff, the caves in the water cooler, if you remember, I shared that article. Um, so they very much appreciate it. They will be here. Ready to go at the uh, uh, total meeting, just like we said, they're all set to come and present three plans. Um, at that stage, uh, it'll be a rough cost. Um, and it should be full transparency, and I have deep respect for Roger, and and Roger has a little bit different approach. Um, not that, I know we're not, you know, it's talked, even if we get this in October, we're gonna refine, so this isn't March of two thousand twenty-five. Um, and there is enough money in the Warren article to support a construction management firm costing it, or you can go rough cost. In Hopkinton, we brought forward a rough cost, which is something like four hundred dollars a square foot times twenty thousand square feet, gets you a rough cost. Um, we brought that and the community supported it. Um, so it's Roger, uh, is not comfortable. He wants, when he presents to the town, he wants a construction management firm to standing behind the cost. Um, whatever works, so, but they will present a rough cost, they um. Are, they also asked just for ballpark. They asked for four bond runs. Um, because what, which, and we talked about this a little bit, what's unique about this situation as opposed to many situations, you have fee already in the budget. About a little under one point four million dollars it costs to educate several of the eighth graders, right? That is a line item in the budget. So that is money that you can now put, if you choose to, right, put here. And then, so the staffing cost plus the building cost. Greater than less than, what's the delta between that and one point four? You with me? And so they wanted a, just some bond run, so there's a bond run, seven million, nine million, eleven million, and thirteen million, so you will know the payment. Because that's the, that's the payment portion, like, say it's eight hundred thousand. And then we said by eleven teachers. So eleven teachers, don't, uh, Amy does like, I'm an ish person, right, so um, one point three billion. One point three million plus eight hundred thousand is two point one. The, the school district would pay a six hundred thousand dollar premium. To have so many eighth graders here. Like, for those who listen, this is just very issue. Um, but you understand, you understand the math behind that, so if you choose this, a seven million project, and that's four hundred thousand. Then you're within. One point five million.
Right.
You would make the delta, wait, well, okay, and so we gotta look into the project and see what you think. It could be a premium, but. But remember also, the bond payment goes away. It's not forever. After twenty years, thirty years, fifteen years, whatever the size, that goes away, and then your total cost is maintenance. And staffing. You would make, it's the first, and actually, if you go level deck, level principal, all these discussions, sometimes the first five years are worse. You know, I mean, you pay the higher, higher pay at first. So they asked for bond runs. They are um, presenting three on uh, the October board meeting. Um, and they are also took the advice. Uh, one thing that they suggested, so you'll see one, um, they suggested not a half special classroom. Um, they said for future and flexibility, when you're here, it's so much, it's 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 somewhat more cost effective to go from a half to a full. And there's so much more flexibility, it's so much space, um, but there, but it's all board decision, but they're suggesting with Steve, let's do. A a nine hundred square foot classroom instead of like a six hundred square, six, three hundred square feet, and that room can be used if we have bubble. Right, you can use that room for the bubble, you know, you can hold a bunch of things, so as much flexibility going forward as possible. We also talked, whether we did at the meeting, that if the board should uh, choose to and got passed the middle school option. Then the bubble, uh, they agreed that the bubble would not be necessary, because we could convert more flexible space for those eight. Um, but if we don't go. Something that created, the town doesn't pass it, so bubbles are gonna catch up.
Sure. Talk about preschool?
Yes.
And we're talking about rough costing, or is the board still agreed that we will be charging for preschool, we have preschool here. And should we count that into our rough costing? So in order to make that even out, because we talked about how that would even out if we did do that.
Typically, uh, typically. Uh, I don't know of any district that doesn't. Charge for the typically developed students in inclusion preschool. So if you have thirty kids, just right, again, ish, the um, you need fifty percent typically development, fifty percent identified. So those fifteen that are typically developed would pay, and that that increases revenue, decreases your. So typically, I don't know of any reverse inclusion, inclusion-based preschool that doesn't charge. But typically, it's not a great language. I don't love the language, but typically developed littles. Right, because it's a great service, and we need them, but we do charge, and then there's a waiting list in lottery, because once you do it, it's kind of. Then remember. Not all schools, but the vast majority of K six schools will certainly decide to have preschool. It's not all. I can't look it up, but the vast majority do. Because they believe the littles should go to school in their community. And just Heather and I and Meg last year. The concern is if Amherst doesn't have enough space, then we could, we could be working at Gofftown. You know, I mean, it's just, it's not, it's not stable.
Right.
For some of our early, early identified, early intervention young students. Around here. Um, most people are excited and understanding the need for preschool. Seven and eight is. You know, that's, that's a big hit, it's a decision, some are good, some say hard to go ninth grade, right, to stop, you can, right, meeting your, meeting your Amherst buddies. You know what I mean? But preschool's universal, no one says, Steve, it's not worth it, you can hear when I have conversations like this, it's a fact. Cool beans?
So they'll present, I was just looking for the cap, I'm looking at the calendar, on Thursday, October tenth. Is what I have.
Correct, yeah, they've been invited, they're coming. Um, all three, three plans fit on this. Um, one of, I don't know which one, one of them has two courtyards. Where they box it in.
Not wait to see it.
And uh, we, we did dismiss one of, Roger and I dismissed one of the two-story. Because it was the same one side of the building and the other side of the building, and the one side of the building, and the customer, an entire new split field, uh, leaf field. Would have been on it, and so it didn't make any sense when he could just move it over the other side for the same concept. Okay, so why would you add extra cost to replace your tire septic and leaf field? Um, just for the same, and I'm not saying, I don't love two-story. Um, honestly, because I'm trying to get rid of elevators and try to make access, but you'll have the option, you'll see a two-story, one two-story option, and two single-floor options. And they did some cool stuff. So it sounds like we're not gonna have it, but I had people ask me recently, so I'm gonna ask. Uh, about if we, if we weren't able to get something else done, could we just do a preschool? Yes, right, and so it doesn't sound like they're gonna give us back their design, but something we could ask for afterwards, well afterwards, if we get past anything else, right? But they're gonna, um, they're gonna have a preschool in the design. Right, but not a preschool only, like. Oh, but um, it's Alacar. Right, so you'll know the cost of preschool. Oh, perfect. And they'll know the cost of the entry now. And then Roger, like, we've, we don't fight about this, we're the same, so what, what Harriman will speak to is rough costs. But Roger, and we've called, we have the money, so we're like, um, Roger, it might cost us, don't call me, ten thousand dollars. To hire Montage and Stone, D E W, Matt Millstone. Um, all these construction management firms that will take care of his plans and say, and and Roger gives a medium finishes. Yeah, medium finishing is the entryway because it's double air log, right? It'll cost that up, that's one point, we know, I gave one point two million. Preschool, big business specs is eighty hundred thousand, so, and that would be rough, and I'm, I'm, I love rough. So he wants to go to the town, we can look at the town, said, a construction manager firm said we can build us for this one. And I just never had the extra money to pay for the costing, and we just sold it as no greater than, no matter what. You vote for it, it's not going above it, and we're just gonna fit it, and spend a lot of time, design, build. But Roger, this is, uh, I respect it. So you, eventually you will get an Alacar. Entry, preschool, bubble, middle school, one. That sounds great.
And two questions. Um, will Harriman be able to give us a rough idea about disruption to? The building while this is happening, so we know that kind of impact it's gonna have on students and staff that are here. Right, and my other question is, considering. Middle school, is the gym space that we have now, I don't know, there's like specific specs for. Gym requirements for middle school, is this gonna be sufficient?
Good question. Good question. I feel like it is, but we can ask them how many square feet you need in a middle school gym, they're pretty good at that stuff.
Cause if we're talking cafeteria space versus building a gym.
It's a great question.
I think this is not gonna satisfy what we need for our middle school, then.
Great, we can ask them.
Conversation.
When they're here.
Yeah.
One of the things we've, we're looking, spent a lot of time talking about how much bleachers you have in elementary. Um, chair, right, and how many bleachers, we don't have fixed bleachers.
Right.
And for when you start playing inter-scholastic, when New Boston comes here to play, I'll burn it and send it with the grid.
Right.
You all wanted your bleachers. So it's a great question. And Harriman is not a construction management firm, um, but they will certainly know, but really a construction management firm talks safety. But they'll know, like, um, for example, if you took the two-story option. It's connected to the school, but you could build that without much disruption.
Right.
Because you build it and you connect it to last minute.
Right.
Um, others, it's a little bit different. Um, but yeah, they, they're very experienced, but ultimately, construction management firms phase your construction based on. But it's not a summer.
Right.
But preschool is.
Yeah.
We've had preschool, you build that. Right, it's not hundred square feet. We've had preschool, you build that, right, it's not hundred square feet, and you just make sure you have the money, like we do it all the time, money December. Order everything in those nine weeks.
Right, I mean, the new entryway could potentially be a summer. Okay.
Yeah, if if you, if we were to do something eighth grade, that's gonna be more than a school year, so then you're gonna. You're gonna be paying for that, plus also paying tuition. So continue to send the kids to.
At least you won't hire any staff and so we, you know, we've been.
Right, so you, you still, I guess you don't only have like the bond cost for that time period problems.
That's true, and the first year of the bond is, we like that law, it's interest only, right, for the first year, we like that one. But, um, but I'm with you. I think you, I was, I, I love school architecture, I love school building, I don't look at it, people are very creative. I think you'll like what they have often.
I'm looking forward to it.
But solely up to you, and you can absolutely send them back for another option, they, they want your feedback, no problem.
We're gonna, we announce, uh, do we want public here for that, right?
And we're gonna go ahead and facility committee, like we've done now, join facilities.
So can we get that on a flyer?
Yeah, I was just, I was, I was heading, oh, the flyer, no, that's fine, but, uh, the flyer, but maybe Tom does a blast too, doesn't he?
Yeah, blast, yeah.
So we should ask him.
Yeah, we could, we could work on something, you know, with the, uh. The town, it's the twentieth, we can get something in September twentieth, you know, that, you know.
Um, do you think we should look at a different location, please?
I was gonna say.
We could do it in the M P R.
So I mean, we just gotta make sure that they have the presentation capabilities, whatever they need, we would be ready for that.
Because this isn't a great presentation, spin.
No.
Because the screen's behind you.
Yeah.
You know, we'll, so we'll have, be ready for the M P R.
I'd be surprised if we could fill it, but it would be nice to have better.
You know, just do some.
Space.
If you, you know, two rows of chairs close to the screen.
Yeah.
But even if it's, it's better than in here.
Right.
Don't you think?
Yeah.
So like.
I agree.
Yeah.
Um, I was gonna ask for possibly Kristen to be here to give us a, uh, middle school transition. Uh, temperature, uh, how things have gone for our kids, but given the fact that we're gonna be doing that presentation. Can you make a note or tentative on the seventh of November? If they're heard of, and maybe they're swinging.
I mean, I still hear about the new admin staff too, like how it's all going, brand new staff and.
But, you know, that transition for our kids has always been, again, another topic that is.
Challenging.
Always there, so it'd be nice to get it up.
Alright.
Um, I'll read, so if you could make a moment, that'd be great, thank you. Next item, I made is a. M O U, uh, regarding, uh, personal development days, how they're structured, how they're gonna be handled this year. And I think we'll go right back to Mr. Chamberlain.
Real quick.
Describing that.
In the spring, um, the board collaboration with N V E A revised the calendar to reduce, um, to seven. Early releases, and so the contract, um, says ten. And so now we're revising that, we have to have an M O U that changes it from ten to seven, and then the contract also says late starts. So we have to have an M O U because we're not late starting or early releasing, so this just codifies the changes that we've already made. And what happens is, if the board will have an action, I will just support the M O U. And then we'll get the N V A to to sign it, and then we put them on the web under the contracts, so it's connected. We've already agreed, right, we have, this is just codification, um, just remember, we gained back. No, nine hours of instruction time, we also gained three hours of instructional time for last years and this year's, the parent teacher conference, we went twelve to seven. So we took it one day, said a day and a half, so we gained twelve hours of instructional time last year. It's not bad.
We, we, we need to read this into the minutes or?
I don't think so, okay, but you just do need to imagine, I, I, I wish that we accept the, remember, understanding. So, goodness.
Sure. Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
We're just asking.
That's something I would have to sign.
You have to, yeah, you have to sign it, yeah, we'll send it to you.
Okay. As I saw.
And you have signed it in a big way.
Important. Important.
Yeah, that's me. Um, real quick, no notes, but Mr. Barry for any quick updates?
Yeah, so, um, what have the standings of the item in in our agendas this year, I'll be able to. Put some things in, especially as, you know, we have some meetings for the principals in attendance and, and then also. If there's some thing where we're creating an agenda, there's a topic that, you know, it's kind of like a one-off topic that we want to be able to discuss, we can, we can have a place to to discuss it. But. I wanna talk a little bit about the opening of of the S A U and opening the morning, uh, uh, and is. As we came back on, on, on Wednesday, the, uh, the twenty eighth, as a, as a welcome back day, it was, it was a really good day, it was really good vibes, it's, it's. What I've come to learn is you don't get very many opportunities as an S A U to put all the employees, you know. All the staff, all the teachers in one space, and so we have, you know, everyone at, at the, uh. At, at Southern High School Theater, and, uh, we, we kind of celebrate, you know, some retirements and celebrate longstanding employees. And introducing faces, and then the superintendent kind of gives some remarks, and, you know, this year I kind of. Talked a little bit about focusing on the moment, and, you know, as opposed to the events, and and wanting people to kind of slow down and. Really appreciate the good work that happens, and, uh, we're gonna weave that into some of the, the work that, you know, that that happens this year. About focusing on, on your students, focus on your colleagues, focus on your families, and and just enjoying being a member of S A thirty nine. As best we can and and doing the good work, I combine that with the, the, the work around the framework, you know, our commitment to get. Engage, challenge, and support, uh, it, it was a good, you know, good moment, and it's short, about an hour and twenty minutes or so, so it's not this long. Long piece, and then the next day, we had a collaboration day where we, uh, focused a lot on transitions and and vertical. Vertical, uh, alignment and and horizontal alignment, so conversations about. You know, sixth grade teachers and M V sitting with sixth and seventh grade teachers from A M S. Uh, couldn't, people eight to ninth grade, you know, probably, we had to partner, okay, bless you, and, uh, we. It's something that hadn't been done here in S E thirty nine in that manner, and 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 like fifteen or somewhat years. But we think moving the needle, keeping it a, a consistent educational experience between the three districts. Where we have S A thirty nine collaboration days to discuss actionizing like the framework and collaborating, focusing on the transitions. Uh, that was, that was a good day for us, the first one, so, you know, I told people, first different, then, then we'll get better and we'll get more refined with it. Um, so I wanted to say, you know, the, the welcome back was, was a, was a good, good, good moment. Um, as everyone knows, we are, you know, still working with the bus company to the best we can. Uh, and, you know, we've had some days that are better than others. Uh, it's definitely personnel driven, the dependability, the reliability comes down to, you know, people being. Going to work and being reliable and and, uh, and we're, you know, we have some bludgeons with that, we're working on that. Anyone who has any questions or concerns can just, you know, reach out to the bus company, but then reach out to May as well, if if things are getting regurgitating. Difficult, um, and then we have, you know, brought on a communication coordinator, and it's, it's interesting. People, you know, we got a communication coordinator, and and I, I remember having to tell people, hey, we're working, we're getting this thing up and going, we're gonna have, you know. And then finally, I said, hey, Katie Gary's on her sixth shift, she's like clocked it six times, it's gonna take a minute to get. All the relationships started, all the communications and systems in place, and, uh, but, you know, we see the immediate effects of having somebody. And who has board members and parents, and you might have seen the communication flow, you might have seen a response to. The shooting in Georgia, you know, where we stood with that, you might have seen, you know, a lot of some letters out, and so you're gonna see those types of communications. But there are big times, you know, we're not gonna inundate, you know, uh, the community and family, which we want people to read them, and, uh. So it's gonna be really intentional, but we have that happening, and, uh, just good stuff, and then, you know, the building opened up. And we were up here probably three, three times already to to walk the building and then then talk to Tom and. Um, there's just really good energy, there's just really, uh, positive things happening, the staff is very committed. But the students of of this school, they're committed to each other, uh, they're committed to actionizing the framework and 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 trying to implement the school goals. Uh, it's really a nice, nice school, and we all know, right, and we just wanna keep acknowledging it. And kind of working on the areas that we wanna work on, and, uh, um, you see, moving forward, you see us a little bit more data-driven. And so as we create some agendas throughout the fall, you'll see, you know, some, some conversation around that, and and always we just kind of remain even about our data and. Looking to see if we're effective, and and then having conversations around that, so, um, and then the last thing I'll say is. About reading, um, you're gonna see quite a bit more attention, particularly in, in, in M V, you know, around. You know, talking about reading, talking about the instructional practice around reading, talking about, you know, how students are, are reading, I see some communications around. Families supporting their children, learning how to read, and the importance of it, and what they can do to partner with the school. Um, and so you'll see some intentionality around that, coming in October, in November, so, um. So a lot of good things, I just wanna take a moment to update on how the school started, and I'm pretty grateful for all the good work that's happened. You know, so, appreciate it. Very good, questions, comments?
There have been any issues here with transportation, I'm on the Amherst mom's page, so I know all about Amherst, but.
Not egregious, not egregious, and, uh, but Amherst is a little bit different.
Yeah.
Where are you on? Uh, I had requests, so we're, we're coming down that communication, uh, discussion, uh, and you have a new coordinator. But I had a request from a couple of people I talked to of how to communicate to the rest of town, when you have the flyer coming. And, um, I was just thinking, we could make it available for townspeople to subscribe to some sort of newsletter email. That we send out to non-parents that wanna know about the school.
Yeah, we, we had a version of that, and that is on the things to do list, you know, and, uh, and you also see. You know, Katie Gary kind of started to reach out to the different stakeholder groups in, in this town, from selectmen to town clerk to librarians. Uh, to figure out how to do that, you know, because there are people who want to be involved in that, and. Um, we're also looking for the same thing in the other two districts as well, and, uh, so, um, so more conversation to come on that. And, uh, and, you know, we're gonna see some work done around the website too, to make it a little bit more user-friendly and, and, uh. Um, so, uh, a great suggestion, we're, we're on it, and, uh, we're gonna want to continue to, to, to work on it. I will say, I've been in school leadership fifteen, sixteen years. And, uh, I've never had a year where I sufficiently or effectively communicated, right, and it's, it's like one of those, you know. It's constantly those things that, you know, this image of like just scaffolding around it, you're constantly working on it, you're constantly figuring out how to do it. Trying to figure out what stakeholder groups, and, uh, but we are working on it, and any suggestions or thoughts that people have, we're, we're open, right? And, uh, and so I appreciate it, and, uh, and, uh, we keep, we keep loving the way.
You're never, you're never done.
We're never done.
Do a little bit, you know, so, do a little bit.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, no problem. Our next item is number ten, which is our public input two of two, we do not have anybody live in prison here tonight, but Mr. Chamberlain, anybody?
Shut up tonight.
Okay, so we will skip that, so we have any reason for non-public?
No, we're gonna not meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, no non-public tonight. So I will take an entertaining motion to adjourn our regular meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?